All right, welcome everyone. It is now six o'clock, so we are going to go ahead and get started. I first want to say I am so excited to see so many people in the audience. So we look very forward to hearing all of the great comments that you will be making later on. So I wanted to kind of go over what this meeting is. And I need to start with our budget process. So this is not a meeting where we are going to be presenting the budget to you all, because we're still building the budget right this moment. So we had meetings yesterday, or sorry, not yesterday, even though I feel like it was yesterday. We had them on Thursday and Friday, Monday and Tuesday. So we will be meeting with numerous departments. This is an opportunity for you as the public to come out and state what you feel should be, is in, what should be in our budget. So just to kind of differentiate that, I think some people think that we were going to be presenting the budget. We are still building the budget at this point in time. So that is our budget process. We will have our Director of Finance go through the very short presentation, and then we will open up the floor to any public comment that you have. We would treat this just like a council meeting where you will have two to three minutes to state your comment, and then we want to make sure to respect the time of everyone. So if you could keep your comments between that time, that would be great. It is not a Q and A, so we will not be answering any questions. If you would like to talk to us afterwards, you're more than welcome to do so. But this is an opportunity for you to present anything or any ideas that you may have that should be included in the executive budget. And so with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Pam Olend, our Director of Finance, and she will take you through this presentation very briefly.
Good evening. We typically always start this with a review of the last fiscal audit year. This is a pie chart that basically shows where we get our revenue from. There are two main sources. Our local income tax, which is the orange, the big orange pie piece, and the other is local property tax. That is both real property and personal property, which is about 40% of our total revenue. We, in fiscal '23, spent $13.4 million on debt service. That includes both debt service for the Board of Education, which was just under $8 million last year. Of the 13.4, we spent $58 million on education in total. That includes the Board of Education, Warwick, and a couple other smaller entities. And then the second biggest area in the county is public safety, and that is emergency services, that is corrections, that is the Sheriff's Department, and that is the funding we provide to both the volunteer and the paid fire departments within the county. This is another way of showing our revenue over the last several fiscal years. You will notice the green line is our income tax. As you see, that has significantly grown. It has now become our single largest source of revenue. On the previous pie chart, the pie chart said property tax was larger than income tax, but that included personal property tax. That is kind of in, those are the things that are taxed on businesses. The real property tax, which is taxed on a person's, on real estate, is, and which is under our revenue cap of 2%, is only $64 million for fiscal '23. So it has flip-flopped. Our largest revenue source is income tax for the county. So in looking at the budget, we look at things that are coming up and the things that are happening right now. So these are some budgetary impacts that don't have, the first one has an impact on fiscal '25. We implemented a salary survey, and as most everyone knows, salary pressure across most businesses to maintain, retain, and recruit employees. We have to continue to look at the salaries for the county employees, as well as the benefits associated with those salaries. One of the things that a county is typically able to do is provide slightly better benefits and maybe not as much salary to their employees. The, the market is changing, and younger employees are less interested in a pension and in having healthcare covered in, as well as the county covers it. So those are all conditions that we have to take into account when looking at our budget. As everyone is aware, we implemented a water and sewer plan, and we are still in the beginning processes of determining the best locations for expanded water and sewer within the county. And then after this past week, stormwater is also an issue that is high priority. So in the fiscal '25 budget, historically, we've shown what we have estimated to be our revenue cap number for the next fiscal year. But the state has identified an issue with assessable base, and at this moment, we don't know what impact that is going to have on the revenue cap. So we can't calculate yet the tax rate for fiscal '25. The state is working on a legislative fix for that, and once that happens, we will be making our recommendation for tax rate. Again, revenue cap maxes us out at a 2% revenue growth. We have inflationary impacts across all departments for pretty much everything. Like everybody at home, we are paying higher fuel costs, higher utility costs, higher healthcare costs, and all of those things play in a role in setting the fiscal '25 budget. Again, retaining and recruiting employees to make sure that the county services that people have rely upon are available, and we have the appropriate staffing for that. And at this moment, there are two major capital projects looking to be bonded for fiscal '25, and that is Fruitland Primary Design and the renovations at the Detention Center. As I stated, everyone across all departments is having fuel and utility costs. We are in the process right now of negotiating a new FOP contract, which would be implemented July 1st. That is required by, it is required for us to negotiate with them. Their contract is up as June 30th. State mandated medical costs for inmates continues to grow, and what we have to provide those inmates is also continuing to grow. So not only is it overall cost, but the items that we have to provide to them has, are growing. And then we, like most people, are experiencing increased insurance, health insurance costs. One way we are looking to try to offset that cost to the employees is to implement an employee health center, where if an employee chooses to use that health center instead of a primary care physician or a urgent care center or the emergency room, they would actually have no copays or deductibles. The county would bear the full cost of that versus the employee having to pay a copay and deductible if they choose to go to their standard practitioner or choose to go to the emergency room. The Board of Education is implementing that same model, and we are going in, we are planning to hopefully go in with them. I believe they're opening May-June timeframe. And we have discussed this concept with council, and our intention is to put it in the budget so that our employees have this additional benefit to hopefully offset costs to them. This is a chart showing the last several fiscal years for budgeted, budgeted or spent annual contribution. So as you see, the yellow section is how much interest we pay on our debt associated with the Board of Education. The blue is the amount of principal that we pay. And then the green is maintenance of effort and additional amounts. In fiscal '23, we included $1 million of one-time expenditures, so that did not increase our maintenance of effort. In fiscal '24, the budget was struck with $800,000 above maintenance of effort. And fiscal '25, the maintenance of effort number is about $50,600,000. But we are still working to determine how much we will fund, if anything, above that number. So if you are watching this on PAC 14 or replay, and you have comments that you would like the administration to know, please reach out to AK Kenny at wacomicocounty.org. That is her email address. Please put that in there, or please reach out to her. And now we will open the floor to public comment.
So just a reminder before public comment, again, we do have a lot of people in the room tonight, so please make sure that your comments are between two and three minutes. And again, it is not a question and answer, so we will take everything into consideration of what your public comment is. If you'd like to speak to us afterwards, I'd be more than happy to talk with anybody. Okay, and with that being said.
Good evening. I'm Alan Brown, Vice Chair for the Wacomico County Board of Education. The Board and our staff have been working hard on the budget since fall. This year poses several problems, or challenges. Number one, we're losing the COVID federal funding. Secondly, enrollment is increasing, and we have 24 school buildings, and the average age is 33 years. Despite these challenges, Wacomico County citizens have a lot to be proud of. Our students continue to succeed. Many of them are going on to college, many of them going into the world of work as we prepare those, for those particular two areas. Our kids are having fun and doing well in athletics and the communities when our students go out and do community service. As we near the end of the current school year, I would like to, I would be remiss if I did not recognize and show appreciation for all that the county exec, as well as the county council, have done in providing money above maintenance of effort to the school system for this current year. As we look ahead to the fiscal year 2025, we will once again be asking above maintenance of effort funding, and it is important that we be transparent with the public as we make this request. In the 2010 school year, Wacomico County government had a revenue of nearly $125 million. Of that, 41%, and a little over 50 million was allocated to the Board of Ed for operating expenses. In our current year, county revenue has grown from that point to $193 million, but only 26%, less than 50 million, was allocated to the public schools. In short, if we continue to get the same amount of money that we got in 2010, we will not be able to function. In funding for the 2025, we again are asking for above maintenance of effort funding. In our February budget hearing, we shared that the cost of doing business for the '25 school year will be increased by $4.1 million. This is what we're asking for above maintenance of effort. As the Board, we appreciate the hard work of our 3,000 employees and our 15,000-plus students, and we look forward to continuing our collaboration with the government, county government, on the hard work that is required to make this request a reality. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Mike Stoffer, Wacomico County resident, Superintendent of Schools. I want to start by thanking the county executive and her staff for hosting the public budget hearing this evening, and thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak on behalf of our school system. I was appointed as the superintendent a little over a year and eight months ago. And since that time, my staff, our board members, and this community have collaborated to identify five main priorities for our school system. School climate and safety, student achievement, additional opportunities to engage students, maintaining a high-performing workforce, and parent and community involvement. In addition, our local blueprint coordinator, Dr. Briggs, and his team have also collaborated with our stakeholders to develop the Wacomico Blueprint Plan. Our facilities, planning, and construction team, in conjunction with the School Building Commission, that has community members' representation from the county executive's office and representation from the county council serving on the commission, they publish an annual five-year capital improvement plan. And our maintenance and operations department have a thorough maintenance plan for all 24 schools and additional operation facilities. In short, we have a very specific data-driven plans to guide the work of our school system to always keep our students at the heart of what we do, and I'm very proud of that. But despite all of that, I unfortunately feel, as far as our funding plans, that's where it stops. Each year, there's too much uncertainty around our operation funding and our capital funding from the county that's hindering our ability as a school system to effectively implement the plans that we have developed with our community to move student achievement forward in Wacomico County. As we plan for the long term, I would love to be a part of changing this, and I extend this invitation to collaborate with the county to do that. Maryland school systems have seen an increase in state funding through the blueprint for Maryland's future, but please know these funds are very specific as to their purpose. The increase in funds have specifically had to go to additional state requirements and expand the scope of public education and what we do each day. These additional requirements include increases in mental health staff, special education staff and resources, and staff to support English language learners, just to name a few. In 2010, we had 359 students learning English as a second language out of 15,000 students. As of this afternoon, we have 1,999 students out of 15,000 learning English. That's a 456% increase in less than 15 years. So while state funds help with meeting those needs, local funds really do the rest. Local funds help determine our class sizes, effectively address student discipline, provide extracurricular activities such as sports and fine arts. Local funds also help to determine the environment that our students learn in each day. And while state funds shape the services we must provide, local funds really determine the educational experiences we can provide. I greatly appreciate and express my sincere thanks to the county executive for recommending that the county fund the school system 1.4 million over maintenance of effort last year, and ultimately, I appreciate the county council for funding 800,000 above that MOE request. However, we must also recognize as a county that long-term funding shortfalls have had a detrimental effect on our schools. In 2010, the cost per pupil that we were provided was $3,624. In 2024, the allocation per pupil that we were provided is $3,514. So and yes, in that 15-year time span, the county allocation has actually decreased while inflation has increased over 30%. That is why, as far as the FY '25 funding, our request for the county is $4.1 million over maintenance of effort, which is a request that is simply based off of the inflation that we have experienced this past year. These areas include insurance cost increases, higher costs for utilities, and escalation in technology costs, fuel prices, and transportation cost increases. This would allow us to at least maintain what we are doing and not continue to fall behind. And in the long, long term, we stand ready to support a collaborative solution to this issue. So thank you very much for your consideration. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Stoffer.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Brian Rager, a 30-year resident of Wacomico County and the Chief Finance and Operations Officer for Wacomico County Public Schools. I'd like to take a few minutes this evening to talk about another side of the school system budget, the capital improvement budget. For the benefit of the public, the Board of Education funds its day-to-day work, as Dr. Stoffer described, from the operating budget. The capital budget is used to fund large projects, like new school construction and major systemic renovations, such as HVAC and roof replacements. For most capital projects, the majority of funds comes from the state of Maryland, with the county government providing funding through its own capital improvement plan. This collaborative effort between the state, county government, and the school system is seen in results, like the 2022 opening of the New Beaver Run Elementary and the currently on-budget and on-time major renovation at Mardella Middle High School. Some in the community may look at our recent work on new school construction and major renovations and think that this is a lot of work done in creating new and renovated schools. I would ask that you keep in mind, there are 24 schools in Wacomico County. At the rate of one new or renovated school every three to five years, it would take between 72 and 120 years for a school to come back around for major replacement. Wacomico schools recognize that capital natures, capital projects by their nature are large investments of public funds and public trust. And we work hard to not only stretch dollars, but to identify and utilize additional funding sources beyond the county. Examples of this creativity include the use of COVID-era federal funds, or federal grants, to fund five major systemic projects. So while other school systems use these one-time grants to fund ongoing expenses, leading to major operational budget issues now, including threats of laying off teachers, Wacomico schools spend over $41 million of these federal dollars on essential one-time projects that would have otherwise cost county taxpayers millions. Your school system is transparent with its capital improvement plan. Members of the public can find it on our website. You'll see that it is data-driven, with a wealth of facility condition information for each school, and lists projects out for a number of years. The plan also shows how our Board prioritizes projects. As an example, our current first priority is the replacement Fruitland Primary School. We are very thankful to county government and its demonstration of a commitment to this project in providing $1.3 million in FY '24 to fund the schematic design and further design development for this project. Fruitland Primary is the number-one priority, not because it's the oldest school in our system. It's not. It's the number-one priority because the facility needs index. Our data in the educational facilities master plan clearly shows a number of systems that are end-of-life and are beginning to fail. In short, it will be less a burden on Wacomico taxpayers to replace the school rather than continue making ongoing repairs in the long term. But I want to be clear about the timeline for this project. Delays in funding will lead to cost escalations that will have to be borne by Wacomico County taxpayers. These increases will occur in two ways. First, the state is on a multi-year trend of reducing their share of new construction costs. The longer we wait, the lower percentage of funding we can expect from the state. Second, delays in construction will lead to cost escalations due to inflation. Everyone in this room has felt the impact of inflation the past several years. The impact's been positive on large cash reserves, leading to a large accrual of interest. But it is expected that a significant delay in this project could lead to $10 million in escalations, and that number only grows with further delays. The Board of Education's FY '25 request for Fruitland Primary is $20.5 million. If there is inability or unwillingness to utilize the county's historically high-fund reserve and/or bond for more than half of what county policy permits, we stand ready to work with county leadership to creatively find pathways to keep this project on track and avoid the escalated cost escalation. Appreciate this opportunity this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Lisa Forbus, the Principal of Fruitland Primary School. Tonight, I come before you with a plea, a plea that stems from the heart of our educational system, the children who walk through the halls of Fruitland Primary. Our school, founded in 1955, has been a beacon of learning and growth for generations. However, the time has come for us to face the reality that our beloved institution is struggling to keep up with the demands of our growing community. The facility inventory analysis conducted by a third-party assessment paints a stark picture of challenges we face. Fruitland Primary School ranks at the bottom of the list, 24 out of 24 schools, in terms of facility condition, program index, and utilization measure for capacity efficiency. It is a sobering realization that we cannot continue down this path. Our facilities are not just inadequate, but they are becoming increasingly unsafe and unfit for purpose. We find ourselves in a constant battle to adapt and accommodate the changing instructional needs of our students. From converting closet spaces into instructional or office areas at housing classrooms and portables adjacent to busy roads, we are stretched to our limits. Safety concerns loom large over us, whether it's the leaks from an aging roof after heavy rains or the plumbing issues causing frequent backups. Our reliance on temporary solutions like portable air units and dehumidifiers is unsustainable. We need systemic renovations, especially in our HVA systems, to ensure a conducive learning environment for our students and teachers. Even the basics, like perimeter fencing and parking facilities, are inadequate. Our student safety is compromised by low fencing that they can easily clean while our staff and visitors struggle to find parking spaces. With our current enrollment at 443 students, expected to rise by over 200, we face the daunting task of accommodating even more children with limited resources. But amidst these challenges, there is hope. Hope that together as a community, we can rally behind the cause of ensuring a bright future for our children. I compel you to consider the urgency of this situation and to support the funding needed for this crucial capital improvement project. Our children deserve better. They deserve schools that inspire, empower, and protect them. Let us not fail them in this pivotal moment. Let us stand together and invest in the future of Fruitland Primary School. Thank you for this time and for your unwavering commitment to the well-being of our community's children. Together, we can make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forbus. Good evening, Madam State's Attorney.
Good evening again, County Executive and Director Olend. Jamie Dyke, State's Attorney, lifelong resident of Wacomico County and State's Attorney. Many county employees provide immeasurable value to the citizens of the county by virtue of their specialized knowledge, their experience, and dedication to providing a high-quality service. However, it's no surprise to either of you, retaining these employees and recruiting new ones has become increasingly difficult, in large part because of lack of competitive salaries. My office has hired skilled, knowledgeable staff in the last few years. I imagine that other county departments are in exactly the same position as my office. In the last couple months alone, we've lost a 20-year-old administrative support staff member with an associate's degree. He was making $36,000 with our office. He is now making $70,000 with the promise of $90,000 in two years in the private industry. We lost a 16-year victim witness coordinator. She left her private industry, making $18,000 more annually than when she was with my office. Several staff have left for more money and the ability to work from home. In years past, several staff members have left my office for state employment with guaranteed increases in salary and much better leave-time allowances. Also, it's created an issue, the marijuana legislation. I won't go into that, but of course, no member of my staff can use marijuana, and that has, has created a challenge. For us to continue to lose these good folks puts our county in a really precarious position. Our system permits only, to the best of my understanding, the county executive to authorize salary increases. I've worked closely with you and your staff, and on these issues and many others, and I appreciate your willingness to listen and assist me in meeting the needs, the public safety needs of the county. There are many positive aspects of county employment. The benefits are good. The cause, making a positive impact, contributing to the health, safety, and security of the community are unmatched. There is no greater purpose than serving our community. But these positive aspects too often are not enough to retain quality employees. We have got to provide a livable wage and to fairly compensate dedicated staff in a manner that is competitive with employment opportunities elsewhere. What we often don't account for is the stress and pressure, given the gravity of what my office does and other offices or departments in the county. The cost of getting it wrong, missing the mark, and making an error is high. In a world where most want less responsibility and no accountability, the challenges of recruiting and retaining are unlike anything I've experienced in my 17 years as a prosecutor and county employee. I want to mention the grand jury report that was recently released. I hope you've received a copy by now. Statutorily required, the grand jury visited the Detention Center in late January, and I ask that you and the council consider that report in striking your budgets this year. The last thing any of us want is for our communities to suffer further. Thank you for all you do and for your time and attention, as always. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam State's Attorney.
Hi, good evening. My name is Katie Kriener. I'm a taxpaying resident in Wacomico County. I've lived in this county since 2015. Prior to that, I was a resident of Somerset County for the early part of my life. Prior to that, I was a resident of Somerset County for the early part of my life. My son Caleb is a first-grade student with special needs who attends Fruitland Primary School. I come to you today to advocate for the necessary funding to proceed with the Fruitland School project as previously planned. After listening to the recording for the previous council meeting, I heard a lot of statements of why Fruitland Primary and why now, that the school haven't heard much from the community, so that really drove me to come out and advocate for our school today. I'm hopefully here to help kind of clarify the big rush to proceed forward with the new school from a parent's point of view. I don't think anyone will argue that rundown infrastructure will hinder progress in any of the areas mentioned that are proposed in the budget. But what I'd like us to consider is the impact that lack of funding would have. Aging infrastructure negatively impacts the ability to meet our educational needs when it comes to the public school system. According to twenty-twenty-two report from Maryland's Interagency Commission on School Construction, the average age of a public school in the state of Maryland is thirty-one years. Fruitland Primary is sixty years, twice that average. I also just heard this evening that it is near twice the average in the county alone. In August of twenty-twenty-two, the Board of Education published the feasibility study highlighting the exhaustive list of poor conditions. Ms. Forbus previously, and her comment this evening, talked about the more recent conditions. But I'd also like to highlight a few that she did not mention, that the school has a lack of accessibility for physically disabled students and staff. There's a lack of proper health suite, so there's no further adherence to the Maryland Code of Regulations for these health and safety requirements. One of the more concerning ones as a parent is the open breezeway between buildings. My child is required to dress for the elements before going to lunch, physical education, art, music, and other special courses. A significant amount of time is taken from classroom instruction to do that activity. There's only one accessible toilet in the entire building for the staff. There's very limited conference space. IEP meetings are sometimes held in classrooms that take time away from the teachers. The food service area is too small. There's a small guidance office, and the configuration of the school is not set up well for our educational needs. Overall, the school does suffer from outdated systems and inefficient layout and setup, and these concerns are, you know, dire, which is why the Board of Education has named it its top priority in terms of funding for replacement costs. There's a lot of time spent by the staff and the teachers overcoming these challenges, and that's time we're not going to be able to get back. But you have the ability to influence how much time that our future students and teachers spend doing those same activities. So how much longer are we going to wait for that? I ask you, if anything, for some certainty in the scheduling. It seemed, based on the last council meeting, that it was uncertain whether it would be twenty-seven, FY thirty, or beyond, when this would actually get funded. So if anything, I urge certainty in that, if you can make that type of a decision. But also, I really urge that you keep this on schedule as tracked. Infrastructure shouldn't be the way, or shouldn't be what stands in the way of our children's opportunity to receive a quality education in a safe and nurturing environment. I appreciate all that our elected officials are doing. These are challenging situations and challenging times, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm also a parent for students at Fruitland Primary, and my name is Tamika Copeland. Education is something I'm passionate about, and for many reasons. I have two children, I have children that are part of the educational system. Education should be top priority. Increasing public school funding would be beneficial for outdated textbooks, lack of technology, and increases more resources for our students. These resources would be crucial in our children's development. Also, there needs to be a commitment to the educating of our children, and that starts with putting our children on equal footing and giving them a chance to compete in this world. A comprehensive solution is essential. Adequate space is required for classrooms and hallways to ensure a conducive and educational atmosphere. There had been billions of dollars into other schools in our community and county and other projects. Now is the time to focus on Fruitland Primary School project. Your assistance in bringing about positive change is greatly appreciated. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I'm Craig Mitchell, educator here in Comico County Public Schools. I'm here this evening with deep concern and commitment to the future success of our community's students. As a leader in our community, the budgetary decisions that will ultimately determine the quality of education our schools provide and the future prospects of our students rest with you. As we navigate the allocation of blueprint money, ensuring that it is targeted toward addressing the most pressing needs within our educational system, we must consider and ensure that we provide a lasting impact on student success. While formulas for English-language learners, special education, and pre-kindergarten existed prior to the blueprint initiative, substantial increases incorporated into the new formula underscore a commitment to meeting the evolving needs of our diverse student population. Further, it is essential that we provide and prioritize the recruitment and retention of qualified educators, recognizing that teachers' salaries play a pivotal role in this endeavor. Educators, including the many diverse professionals who support teachers in the classroom, must be appropriately compensated for their invaluable contributions. The current challenges facing our district, such as the difficulty in hiring and retaining educators, teacher vacancies, and educators leaving for higher-paying positions, necessitate urgent action. Paramount in attracting and retaining the talented individuals who will shape the future leaders of our community is salary. A salary that enables our educators to enjoy time with family and friends beyond the school day rather than seeking second and third jobs. You have recognized these needs, obviously, in providing for increased pay for positions held by county employees. And so I know that you realize that to provide the highest standard of education for all students in Comico County, action must now be taken to fully fund the Comico County Public Schools budget. Our community is relying on you to act decisively and with foresight, ensuring that every child can thrive academically and achieve their full potential. Thank you for your work to achieve these goals.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Gale. I am here to address concerns regarding the sustainability of funding mechanisms and the allocation of resources within our educational system. It is vital that we prioritize the well-being of our students and educators while ensuring physical responsibility. As a community, our current funding streams are secure and more than adequate to support the educator salaries without compromising other aspects of education. Blueprint funding represents a significant opportunity to bolster our educational system now and in future years. Still, increases are necessary to meet the evolving needs of our student population effectively. Inadequate funding prevents students from getting resources necessary for quality education. Studies have shown that spending cuts mean lower achievement for our students. In conclusion, I urge our county executive to prioritize full funding of the Comico County Public Schools budget. By ensuring funding, we can foster a thriving educational environment for our students and educators alike. Thank you for your attention to these critical matters.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kim Upton. I'm a Comico County resident and school nurse at Bennett Middle. I also have a daughter who went through and graduated from Comico County Schools. As a school nurse, I've been with the county for over twelve years, and I'm here tonight to urge your support in funding the above maintenance of effort that Dr. Stauffer is asking for, for our fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, to support our students, their future, my fellow colleagues, and the future of Comico County Public Schools, as well as the county. Like everyone here, I am committed to the success of our students. Everyone in our school system plays a part in that success. Our instructional assistants are often pulled to cover classes because of staff shortages, which means students aren't getting the services and the support that they need. Our cafeteria workers work short-staffed, which means it takes longer for students to get their lunch. They then have less time to eat, they try to scarf it down, and end up with a stomach ache, which means it makes it hard for them to learn. Of course, our teachers are also getting pulled during their planning time to cover classes, which decreases the time that they have to create the intense creative learning experiences that they want for their students. Our support staff are some of the lowest-paid members of our community. We have staff members in our school systems that are making twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars a year. And if they have a family, they are really struggling to make it, to pay rent, or a mortgage, car payments, utilities, and to put food on the table for their families. That also makes it difficult for their students to learn. As a county, we are what we create, and we are what we give. What we give to our schools and to our students will come back to us. The students will perform better, they will go farther, and that will provide us with more teachers, more support staff, as well as businessmen and women, trades, healthcare, and resources that our community desperately needs. I strongly urge you to fund our school budget beyond the maintenance of effort requirements for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Upton.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Wright, and I live in Heveron, Maryland. I'm coming with two hats tonight, so I'm going to be a bit longer than my allotted time. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak as the Chair of the Comico County Education Foundation. We were formed in two thousand and eighteen as a joint initiative of the Greater Salisbury Committee and the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce. Our mission is to advocate and promote excellence and opportunity for all students through the active partnerships with the community and to provide additional funding for programs and initiatives not included in the school budget. With that being said, we are here to advocate for your full support in honoring the request for the four-point-one-million above-maintenance of effort. These funds would support the school climate, salaries, blueprint requirements, technology, and much, much more. In two thousand and six, the Board of Education was forty-three percent of the county's budget. In two thousand and twenty-four, it's around twenty-five percent, while our revenue has increased significantly from one-hundred-and-thirty-million in fiscal year fifteen to one-hundred-and-ninety-million in fiscal year twenty-four. Based on fiscal year twenty-five maintenance of effort comparisons, Comico County is twenty-point-seven-six percent, with Somerset being twenty-point-six-five percent, and Dorchester being twenty-nine-point-six-one. And I won't even include Worcester County because they've got the beach. Costs per pupil, Comico is three-thousand-five-hundred-and-fourteen, and Somerset is around four-thousand, and Dorchester County is close to six-thousand. So we are next to last for cost per pupil, with Caroline County being the lowest. Based on this information, the four-point-one-million will cover the cost of doing business, which includes healthcare insurance, life insurance, electric, technology, equipment costs, transportation, fuel, and some of the emergency management systems. I realize this is a very large number, but we believe in investing in our children and the educational system. As the needs increase, the expectations and bars are raised, and the cost of doing business increases, we have to pull together. I ask that you help Dr. Stauffer and his staff provide the best possible educational experience. You can do this by working side-by-side, hand-in-hand, sitting at the same table with open minds and mutual respect. This can be done professionally and finding the balance between the executive office, the chamber, county council chambers, and the Board of Education. So I please ask you to be open-minded and find a solution to meet this request. Now, if you will allow me to switch gears and put on my hat as a resident of Comico County and a taxpayer. I was appointed by the governor and was honored to serve on the Comico Board of Education as a board member, vice president, and president for six years, starting in two thousand and six. Based on my experience, I am fully aware about how the school system, the county, and the state agencies work when it comes to school construction. I was involved with James M. Bennett High School, Bennett Middle School, the startup of many schools in between, and the latest being Maradella Middle and High School. I would like to share my thoughts and concerns on the school at Fruitland Primary and the lack of commitment and funding in the capital improvement plan. Fruitland Primary School was built, and it will, it's sixty years old, as you heard earlier, so if, right now, if it stays on plan, it would be completed in two thousand and twenty-seven, it would be sixty-three years old. I watched the meeting from March the fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, and I was pretty shocked about the lack of funding and the comments that were made. School construction projects typically take about ten years from start to finish. Talks about Maradella Middle and High School started prior to two thousand and six, with major planning committee starting in two thousand and nine. The renovated school was underway and will be completed, hopefully, in two thousand and twenty-five. That's nineteen years, way too long. The School Building Commission, which is a county council-appointed committee, reviews the plans for school renovations or construction. I know that Mr. Cannon from the council serves, as well as Mr. Luffman from the executive's office. It is important to have these representatives involved in the entire process and to help ensure transparency for the council, executive, and Board of Education, and the community. It is apparent the process was followed since the startup funds and the amount of one-point-three-seven-five million dollars has been spent on the design phase. It was recommended by Ms. Olin that we delay the project. If you look at the current proposed CIP, there are zero dollars, not even one dollar, for the Board of Education for fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, or twenty-nine. This plan is shows zero commitment to our students, our teachers, staff, and the entire public school system when it comes to capital projects. We have twenty-four schools to maintain. Our county government has a responsibility to provide funds to ensure that our students have this up-to-date and a safe learning environment. You've heard about the concerns with the school, whether it's educational, with an adequate space, portable classrooms, latest technology, the safety with portables, although they're necessary, they should be temporary, the building, the mechanical systems are at the end of their service life, the electrical issues, the roof needs, and the building does not meet current energy codes. We all know that there are many needs within the county, and those aren't going away. Our students aren't going away, and our schools' needs aren't going away. If we delay this project, we would most likely jeopardize and lose the state's portion of the project cost in the amount of over thirty, thirty-eight million dollars. If we delay the project for one year, it could potentially cost the county five million dollars per year in inflation cost. As stated in the cover page on the CIP that I pulled off the internet, this document is a planning document and is an important tool to assist with long-range financial and public works plans. Each year, the programs are reviewed and reevaluated. The current proposed CIP shows no plan or commitment for our schools. Mr. Cannon stated that the train for Fruitland Primary has left the station. I agree with him one-hundred percent that it is too late to stop this project. The one-point-three-seven-five billion dollars has been spent for the design phase. If you keep the CIP as is, showing money committed, no money committed for fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, or twenty-nine, then that money is wasted. The current school will be closer to seventy years old, the cost of inflation will be over twenty million dollars, and we will lose the state funding, and the process will start all over. After listening to the discussion on March fifth, it was reported that the rainy day fund had approximately forty million dollars, but it now has at least eighty million dollars and earns about five percent interest. The county has four more money in the rainy day fund than recommended, and I believe it's about doubled, if I'm correct. Why doesn't the council and executive's office give back some of the money and reinvest it for the citizens? You wouldn't have to borrow any money. Comments were made about where the parents from Fruitland were. Is the school needed now? The parents aren't here at the meetings. The citizens voted for you to serve on the council and in the executive office to make decisions, to provide services, and to make Comico County a better place to live, learn, play, and stay. We shouldn't have to come and defend or fight for a great place to live, learn, play, and stay. We put trust in you to have the foresight, vision, power to get these projects done, whether it's for education, public health, roads, emergency services, or other governmental projects. I want a government that is proactive, not reactive. I want a government that will provide solutions and find a balance for all governmental departments. I would like I would like to see the executive and the county, and the county council budget for a certain amount of CIP funds each year. We have twenty-four schools to maintain, so there will always be a school to renovate or build. I'm just asking to be proactive. It would be irresponsible for the Board of Education to not plan for the future and not come to you with requests for money to maintain our schools. I don't understand why this is an issue. You know that the cost of doing business, it's not really a want, it's a necessity. In closing, our children deserve better. They deserve the best. The families in Fruitland School District have been waiting in line for a state-of-the-art, fully-functioning, safe-learning environment, and I'm asking for the executive, staff, the county council, and the Board of Education to work together and find a way to allocate the funds for fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Wright.
Evening, everybody. I'm Mike Dunn, the President and CEO of the Greater Salisbury Committee, also live in Wycomico County. You know, I don't hear anything that's contentious this evening. I hear everything that is very logical. Everybody's already spoken. And I want to do a shout-out. And I see four council members behind me. I won't turn around, but I thank them for being here. There may be more. In the last twenty years, and I'm probably going to miss a few, Bennett Middle School, James M. Bennett, Beaver Run, North Salisbury, West Salisbury, Prince Street, Mardella, Pemberton, and West Side have all been either completely rebuilt or completely renovated. And I thank all the members of the Building Commission, the county council, the county executive, because they understand something that President Cannon said at that March fifth meeting, that this is our job. It will always be our job as county-elected officials to build schools. And I applaud that sentiment. And there's no member, eight members of the county government, who I don't think understand that basic concept. Myself, I went to East Salisbury Elementary, I went to Y Middle School, and I went to Y High. The newest one of them is Y High built sometime in the nineteen-fifties, so we know that there's more to come. I urge, and I know these are tough decisions, but what is unthinkable, and everybody knows that, is that we are funding per-pupil spending in 2024 at the same level that we did in 2008. We had a Greater Salisbury Committee General Membership Meeting today, and this was brought up, and I asked anyone in that room if their costs today were the same as they were in 2008, and no hands went up, as we would expect. I know these are tough decisions. We support Dr. Stauffer's request for the 4.1 million-dollar maintenance of effort increase. We thank the county executive last year, the members of the county council last year. They increased above maintenance of effort. And I just want to say that in the same way that we know that building schools is part of the job, it has to be a philosophical part of the job that we can't just strive for it to be funding our schools at the maintenance of effort level. Philosophically, we have to start realizing, as this county government did last year, that going above maintenance of effort needs to be the new standard. We thank you for doing that last year. We hope you'll do it again this year. My friend Bill Chambers of the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce may or may not be behind me. Casey's not. Bill is very famous for saying, in a very spot-on way, "economic development equals and is based on the quality of our public schools." We ask people to come here and join our community, and we have to support our schools. I heard a few things tonight from the CFO of the public schools, Mr. Rager, I think that's your title, to the principal at Fruitland, and from the parents, and from Michelle Wright, who was just up here. Let's collaborate. I heard from Councilman Shane Baker last week that perhaps we don't have to borrow the way we used to borrow because we do have this extra, this really healthy fund balance of eighty-seven million dollars. So collectively, let's collaborate to figure out a way to keep the Fruitland project on And Madam County Executive, of course, all of this starts with you. You get, you get the big money to make the big decisions, but the budget starts with you. The budget that you're going to hand for all of us to consider comes from you and starts with you, and then the county council gets to react. You reacted well. Again, applause to everybody doing their job. We all look forward to seeing the new sheriff's public safety complex come online in about a month or so. Congratulations for doing that. That also required a tough decision at some point in time. And lastly, I would be remiss, GSE has developed something called GSE 2030. We're going to be releasing it to the public. Among the things we recommend as moving forward in GSE 2030, and that's designed to see where are we, where do we need to be, it's really time to have a discussion, an open, honest, public policy discussion, taken at across-the-community level, on this thing we have called the revenue cap. So the revenue cap in the last five years has cost Wycomico County twelve million dollars in revenue. Every year in the last five to seven years, we have to lower our tax rate in order to meet the requirements by law of the revenue cap statute. Ms. Pam certainly knows that better than anyone. There's a distinct possibility, again this year, that our tax rate may have to go down again. And while that sounds wonderful, what it's doing is actually putting us further in the hole. So all the GSE 2030 is saying is, let's have a public, a real public policy discussion on the merits of the revenue cap. If that discussion says that the revenue cap is fine, then we don't touch it. But perhaps that discussion suggests that instead of a revenue cap, we should have a tax rate cap. But either way, let's have that discussion because it's really, and always, the eight-hundred-pound elephant in the room, and we have so many revenue challenges that it, it just doesn't seem to make much sense to keep leaving revenue on the table that we would have otherwise earned. I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, county executive, members of the council. Thanks for all that you do. These are tough decisions, we all know that, but we trust in you to kind of do the right things and do the right things for Wycomico County. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Tom Taylor, the eight-hundred-pound gorilla in Wycomico County.
Are you the elephant in the room, Tom?
The revenue cap doesn't cost the county twelve million dollars. The revenue cap allows taxpayers to keep twelve million dollars and spend it the way they want to. I know that times are tough, and I support education, and I support teachers, but we have to remember that a child's first teacher is their parents, and by making things harder and harder for them to afford things, takes them away from their children more and more in having to work, one, two jobs. So I would like to consider what the average salary income is per year of Wycomico County resident that isn't in the Board of Education, and compare that to the salaries that the Board of Education makes. I haven't done the research. I just want the taxpayers, the ones that aren't part of the Board of Education who are working and going through the same thing without a source of income that they can pull from other than the businesses that they have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Good evening. I think that was my cue. County Executive Giordano, county council members, I'm certain that you've heard this many times. I've heard it tonight, but please allow me to add my appreciation to you and to your teams for your responsible action last year to raise school funding above maintenance of effort. You know, your recognition of the need to raise those salaries of county employees who work in many professions within the county, just like in the Board of Education, in order to retain and recruit a strong, dedicated workforce was necessary. Similarly, I am here this evening as a Wycomico County resident, taxpayer, educator, mother of children who went through our public schools, and president of the Wycomico County Education Association, rising in support of full funding for the Wycomico County Public School budget. Wycomico County Public Schools must be protective of our students by retaining our highly-effective educators who continue to ramp up students' learning potential. You recognize the correlation between staff appreciation, pay, and retention. Now invest in our educators. Investing in our educators moves us closer to being the sought-after district for families and educators alike, and that means our community grows, our community thrives. You must protect our students and community from losing out on the best job candidates to wealthier districts. This takes proper funding. Though the county has experienced considerable growth in revenue, over fifty-nine percent since 2010, allocations for our public schools have significantly decreased. Per-pupil spending in Wycomico remains far below the state average of eight thousand dollars. Around the state, an onslaught of financial pressures such as school districts have never seen is impacting school systems, and the financial disruption is taking a toll on students. Here, because of the Wycomico County Public School System's responsible use of the one-time government funding, like ARPA funds, that tragic fallout can be averted. Still, we remain at the bottom of the chart per-pupil spending, and that threatens operations as well as our capital funding. Madam County Executive, we have been through extremely tough years for our students and our school system. Arguably, the last few have truly tested us more than we would have ever have thought, but we've always risen above all else to support our community and our public schools. Now our community must be lifted again, moved to proper funding that supports the needs of our students and our community. A small portion of Wycomico County's rainy day fund, which far exceeds the reserves of counties across the state, would bridge the need for funding as the blueprint launches into provisions for following years. The operations and capital plans budget for Wycomico County schools must be fully funded. Let's move forward with the Fruitland Primary School, a new facility that increases preschool enrollment capacity and will benefit our community greatly. Let's provide all of our students healthy, safe buildings. And by the way, nobody mentioned that Y Middle is ninety-four years old. It's not a want, it's an urgent need. I stand in support of full funding for the Wycomico County Public Schools budget. Please hear and consider the suggestions of the citizens when creating the fiscal year 2025 operating budget, and prioritize the needs of our students, our community, our public schools. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Hi there. Greetings. I'm Nate Davidson, and I am a Wycomico County resident and a teacher at Mardella Middle and High School. As a matter of fact, I taught your son last year.
My child.
Yeah. I'm also proud to state that I have three children here in Wycomico County Schools, one in elementary, one in middle, and yes, even one in high school. As a dedicated educator who's been in the profession for fifteen years, I'm here tonight to advocate for the future of my children, as well as the future of students in our public school system. For this, I urge your support to fund above the maintenance of effort requirements in the upcoming fiscal year. I truly believe that the students of Wycomico deserve more than the minimum maintenance of effort required. Adequate funding for our students today has long-term benefits for the future of our county, a better educated population, more likely to gain employment, have reduced dependence on public assistance programs, and contribute greater to tax revenue in the future. The county won't see these benefits overnight, but many of the students of today will continue to live and/or work in the county for decades to come. Seeing our student, setting our students up for success today will build the foundations of a stronger Wycomico. Continue, I, excuse me. I hope that you continue to be an advocate for the students of the county, and we shouldn't settle for the status quo. Let's send a message that our students deserve more, and I hope you will deliver that message. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. John Palmer, Wycomico County citizen and taxpayer. I really wasn't going to get up and speak tonight because I think our superintendent and his staff has done an excellent job in representing the school people and the citizens. So I was just sitting back there nice and calm until the word "revenue cap" came up. And everybody should know that I'm one of the originers, originators of the revenue cap, started back in nineteen ninety-nine. It was originally done in order to prevent the county government from raising prices on property taxes very high. For those of you who were back there at that time, you will remember that if you looked in the Daily Times, where there's normally about a page, page and a half of for-sale properties due to delinquent taxes, at that time, when they did have the opportunity to raise it twenty-four percent, there were about ten to twelve pages listed of people who were not able to take care of the property taxes. We did not push through a tax cap. The reason why we didn't push through a tax cap is because other counties have tried doing that. Talbot County, for one. And it came back from the courts. It's illegal for the citizens to try and cap the revenue of a, of the county executive to raise taxes on property taxes. You just can't do it. So what we did is we put a limit on the amount that could be raised. They could raise it up two percent, one percent, they could go down to zero, they could go negative zero and give money back to the taxpayers. That's why it's not limited. So I think we need to get our terminology straight, and really, I don't know why it's mentioned in the, in the charter. I think it's listed as tax cap, too, or revenue cap. And if you look at the original ballot, I don't think that's what it had, but it's worth checking. So, thank you for all you're doing, and I do appreciate what you did last year because that money was put to good use. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Again, Mike Dunn putting on a different hat or advocating for another cause. And first and foremost, I want to thank Mr. Palmer. That effort led back in 2000, one of the most extraordinary things we've ever seen relative to citizen engagement, so we always thank him for his efforts. I also came tonight to speak on behalf of the state's attorney, Jamie Dykes, and the requests that they have put in. When I think of this community and the two people who probably have the toughest job at night falling asleep, I think it's the superintendent, and I think it's the state's attorney. The job that state's attorney and her staff do each and every day is extraordinary. She's got a difficult enough job, as she talked about this evening, retaining, recruiting staff and workforce. So anything that you can do to buttress to enable her and her team to continue to do the fabulous job that I think none of us can even possibly imagine would be helpful, and so any efforts in that regard would be great. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Well, we thank you all for coming out, and we will take all of these considerations or requests, make them considerations, you know, as we put this thing together. So I do appreciate the strength that you all came out and the unified front that the school board has shown tonight. I do appreciate that. I want to let you know that this, this budget year is
I want to let you know that this, this budget year is probably one of the trickiest that we've had to put together. There's a lot of needs, there's a lot of wants across our county, and so I just want to let you know that we're going to work as hard as we can to make sure that we try to fulfill those needs. And I don't know if you wanted to say anything else, Pam?
No, I'm good.
No. So thank you all for coming tonight. We'll be hanging around if you have any specific questions.